Good evening. Thank you for joining Denver City Council's weekly meeting. Tonight's meeting is being interpreted into Spanish. Alejandro, would you please introduce yourself and let our viewers know how they can enable translation on their devices this evening?
Of course. Thank you very much for having us. My name is Alejandro. Today I am here with Sam. Hola a todos. Gracias por tenernos aquí con ustedes. Mi nombre es Alejandro. Aquí estoy con Sam Mooy de la Cooperativa Comunitaria de Lenguaje. Si prefieren escuchar en español, van a poder seleccionar el icono de globo o mundo en la parte inferior o mano derecha en su pantalla, o seleccionar el menú con los tres puntitos que dice más y seleccionar interpretación. De ahí van a poder escoger el español y poner el audio original en mudo justo abajo. And with that, just a friendly reminder to be gracious with your pace as we read off the bills for today. Thank you very much. Gracias.
Thank you. Welcome to the Denver City Council meeting of Monday, May 23, 2020. Council members, please rise as you are able and join Councilmember Sawyer in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by my station under God, in the council, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmembers, please join Councilmember Sawyer as they lead us in the Denver City Council land acknowledgement.
The Denver City Council honors and acknowledges that the land on which we reside is the traditional territory of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples. We also recognize that the 48 contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. We honor elders past, present, and future, and those who have stewarded this land throughout generations. We also recognize that government, academic, and cultural institutions were founded upon and continue to enact exclusions and erasures of Indigenous peoples. May this acknowledgement demonstrate a commitment to working to dismantle ongoing legacies of oppression and inequalities and recognize the current and future contributions of Indigenous communities in Denver.
Thank you. Councilmember Sawyer. Madam Secretary, roll call. Seeta Baca?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Herndon? Heinz?
Here.
Cashman?
Here.
Ortega?
Sandoval?
Here.
Sawyer?
Here.
Torres?
Here.
Madam President? Here. Eleven members present? There are eleven members present. Council has a quorum. Approval of the minutes. Are there corrections to the minutes of May 16? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Council announcements. Are there any announcements this evening? Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to announce some upcoming events. This weekend from Memorial Day at Kennedy Golf Course, they are kicking off summer with a grand reopening of the Putt-Put Course. If you've never been to Kennedy Golf Course, they have a very old-school Putt-Put Course, and they have specials for kids and families that include food and fun. So I hope people will go to that. There's also four upcoming events in support of Ukraine. There's actually one tonight. And next Saturday, there's a concert at the Inglewood Civic Center, which is right next to Councilman Clark's district. There's another concert on Sunday. And then on June 5th, the Parker Symphony Orchestra is holding a concert at Cherry Creek High School. If you've never been to Cherry Creek High School, it is across the street from my council district, so it is next to Denver. And so I hope people will consider going to at least one of those events to show our solidarity with the people of Ukraine. And I also want to announce that on June 5th, I'm having a skate park pop-up event at Kennedy Soccer Fields in its event for kids to learn how to skateboard. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Black. Councilmember Flynn?
Thank you, Madam President. Denver has lost another great Irishman from North Denver in retired police captain Jerry Kennedy. Jerry, as with former auditor, state senator, and councilman Dennis Gallagher a couple weeks ago, Jerry passed away on Wednesday evening last week. Both Jerry and Dennis were graduates of Holy Family High School up in North Denver on Utica Street. And Jerry, a lot of folks know the background if you've read the paper lately about Jerry and the super cops of Denver and Elvis Presley. I won't go into them now because this is a time, actually, to mourn Jerry's passing. He served this city on the police force from 1957 until 1991. I got to know him when I was a cops reporter at the Rocky Mountain News. And as I said about Dennis a couple weeks ago, I'd have to say the same thing about Jerry Kennedy. He was a larger-than-life Denver character. So many stories you read about Jerry and his time at the Police Department under Chief Dill and other chiefs. Just boggle your mind. He was, for a long time, in charge of the off-duty assignments for Denver officers. And I remember a story that, when the pricing was a lot less than it is today, of course, the pricing for off-duty, he would tell the businesses who wanted to hire, like the Broncos or any of the sport events or concert venues, he would say, "For $5 an hour, we sit; for $8 an hour, we stand." And an incredible, selfless, fantastic human being that we have lost, Madam President. I want to switch gears and mention an event that's going to be happening Thursday in my district. Many of you know that the voters of this city in November approved general obligation bonds, $30 million of which have been allocated to renovating and reopening the May Bonfie Stanton Theater at Loretto Heights in southwest Denver, creating a community-accessible performing arts complex in a seriously underserved part of town. The city's Arts and Venues Department, Ginger White and Mark Jarian, who's a program manager there, they're going to come down to the Bear Valley Branch Library on Thursday at 1:30 and give a presentation, an update on the status of that project. For folks who are in Denver's performing arts community, if you are in the performing arts, if you have an interest in them, I invite you to come down to the Bear Valley Branch Library at 5171 West Dartmouth on Thursday at 1:00. Did I say 1:30? 1:00 to 2:30. And hear the update. There's a lot to report. And with that, Madam President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Flynn. And please convey our sincere condolences to Officer Kennedy's family and friends. It's a huge loss. Councilmember Heinz?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Flynn, for your recognition and also from saving me the hard journey of transitioning from it to something else. So thank you for that. I want to say two things. First of all, I want to let everyone know that on May 29th, between 2:00 and 4:00, District 10 is putting on a program called The Wheel Deal. So it will be on a coma between 11th and 12th in the Golden Triangle neighborhood. We're shutting down the street for a block party. We'll have bands, two bands. We'll have food trucks. We'll have information about the 5280 Trail, which we, as voters, just authorized to fund $7 million for the first 100% realized segment of the 5280 Trail, right there, on a coma between 10th and 12th. We'll also learn about old gas alternative vehicles from the 40 Museum. 40 Museum will be bringing vehicles out there again May 29th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on a coma between 11th and 12th. I would love for people to come out. The second thing I wanted to mention is I want to, I complain to Dottie sometimes about how we could do more about our transit infrastructure. I want to thank Dottie. We have a bill that I will not take off consent, but I want to thank them for adopting technology and allowing us to be more flexible with the way we manage our parking and payment systems. I think that embracing technology is something we can do to make humans' lives better. And if we can help people pay for their parking in an easy way, such as using their credit card, or even better, using an app on their phone, I think that that's a game changer for a lot of folks. And I think that'll really help us have people who are compliant with parking. And really, the ultimate idea for our parking meters is not meant to be a huge revenue source for our city. It's designed to make sure that people only use a limited resource for as long as they need and no more. So I'm glad that Dottie's embracing technology and allowing us to achieve that primary mission of monitoring and managing that precious resource, which is parking in our city, which continues to get more precious every day. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Heinz. Seeing no other speakers, we'll move on. There are no presentations this evening. There are no communications. There are two proclamations being read this evening. Councilmember Cashman, will you please read Proclamation 22-627?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I actually have two proclamations to read this evening. One's coming a little bit later in the month than normal, and the other's coming a little bit earlier than normal, and I'll explain both along the way. But this is proclamation number 22-0627, declaring the month of May to be Mental Health Month in Denver. Whereas Mental Health Month has been observed since 1949, to raise awareness of the importance of mental health. And whereas, three in 10 Coloradans are in need of mental health or substance-use disorder care. And whereas, Black, Indigenous, people of color, and LGBTQIA+ populations experience disproportionate impacts to mental health due to many factors, including but not limited to discrimination, bias, and structural inequality. And whereas, the many challenges Coloradans and Denverites faced in the past year have highlighted the importance of promoting mental well-being and developing a strong behavioral healthcare system. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic has broken down barriers when it comes to talking about mental health and seeking care, and this opportunity to reframe the conversation must outlast the COVID-19 crisis. And whereas, preventative care and healthy learning environments are central to ensuring healthy minds and a strong start for all of Colorado's children. And whereas, from childhood to old age, the quality of our lives depends on our mental health. Every phase of life brings its own challenges and opportunities for continuing mental growth and development. And whereas, building healthcare capacity will improve health outcomes, save taxpayer dollars, and enhance community well-being. And whereas, in 2019, Denver voters approved the Caring for Denver Sales Tax that earmarks some $11 million annually for programs that address a variety of mental health-related concerns. And whereas, Colorado is an emerging leader in innovation in mental health promotion and substance-use harm reduction, and is committed to creative solutions to meet the needs of all communities. And whereas, Denver is working to increase access to housing, healthcare, substance-missuse services that contribute to the promotion of healthier minds across the lifespan of all Denver residents. And whereas, as a community, we can support one another by reducing stigma, encouraging self-care, and participate in an open dialogue about mental health. And whereas, with more trauma-informed practices, we can collectively become more aware, recover from our trauma, and go on to thrive by having compassion for ourselves and each other. And whereas, the Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce Leadership Denver Class of 2022 has assembled a group of community leaders to organize Denver Mental Health Month. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Council of the City and County of Denver. Section 1, that the Council of the City and County of Denver declares the month of May to be Mental Health Month in the City and County of Denver. Section 2, that the clerk of the City and County of Denver shall affix the seal of the City and County of Denver to this proclamation, and a copy be transmitted to the Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce 2022 Leadership Class.
Thank you. Councilmember Cashman, your motion to adopt?
Yes, ma'am. I move that proclamation number 22-0628 be adopted.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Cashman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. As I mentioned, we're later in the month than we would normally like to be to read a proclamation. But, you know, it was brought about 10 days ago, just a little bit too late to get in on last week's schedule. And the topic is so much in the minds of people throughout Denver and Colorado and the United States right now that we felt it was important to shine the light on the need for improved mental health services in the city and certainly in the state. I don't think it's any secret that unfortunately, with all the things that Denver and Colorado have to be proud of, our funding for mental health services is not one of them. And we're far lower compared to our sister states than we would like to be. So just pleased to bring this forward and appreciate the leadership class for their efforts in bringing awareness to this important topic. And I would ask my colleagues to join me in voting this through.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Cashman, and happy to support this very important proclamation and work. Madam Secretary, roll call. Seeta Baca? Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Eleven ayes. Eleven ayes. Proclamation 22-0627 has been adopted. We have five minutes for the proclamation acceptance. Councilmember Cashman will start that. If you'd like to introduce who will accept it?
Yes, we have Kat Ling from the Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class, and floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Cashman and the Denver City Council. We are very excited for you all to pass this proclamation. My name is Kat Ling. I'm CEO of Moonshot Adventures, which is a local nonprofit that supports underrepresented leaders to launch innovative schools and programs in Denver Metro. And I'm also a member of the Leadership Denver Class of 2022, a Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce program that brings together education, business, nonprofit, and government leaders to work together to better the city of Denver. This year, our project was Denver Mental Health Awareness Month, our mayor's project. And we created a social media campaign to enhance community awareness of Denver-based mental health resources. We had our campaign mainly through our Facebook page that you can find Denver Mental Health Month, and we had all the information posted in English and in Spanish, and have reached thousands of viewers and Denver citizens so far. The campaign includes information from dozens of local organizations and initiatives to highlight their work, which has been incredible to see just the amount of community organizations that we have doing amazing work for mental health in our city. A few of them include Joy's Resistance, Eye Matter, Second Wind Fund, Struggle of Love Foundation, Asian Girls Ignite, Asset Education, Caring for Denver, Culinary Hospitality Outreach and Wellness, and more. We also had the project funded through two Colorado-based foundations, the Butterfly Foundation and the Turner Foundation. We are really excited about this proclamation coming as our community heals and continues to heal in the pandemic. We know that the stakes are really high right now for our youth, for our elders, and for our broader community, in that we know that this is the time for Colorado and Denver to be a pace setter in what it looks like for mental health supports. There's still a week left in Denver Mental Health Month, and so we hope that we can encourage people to go and engage on our Facebook page, like and share resources and information. Our hope is that coming out of this, our city will be more aware of the great resources that community organizations are doing here, and folks can really see visibility and awareness of what our local community members are doing. Thank you again for the proclamation on behalf of our Leadership Denver Class and Group.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much for sponsoring that proclamation, Councilman Cashman, and very happy that we were able to celebrate that important work. As you were saying, Leadership Denver 2022. Council Pro Tem Torres, I was thinking back to our time as the Leadership Denver Class of 2011. It's been a minute, huh? With Herndon, with Councilman Herndon. So great work to the Leadership Denver Class. Councilmember Cashman, will you please read Proclamation 22-628 for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is Proclamation 22-628, declaring June 3rd as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 3rd through 5th as Wear Orange Weekend, and June as Gun Violence Awareness Month. Whereas, 41,000 Americans are killed annually by guns, an average of 110 each day, and another 85,000 are shot and wounded every year. And whereas, the U.S. accounts for only 4% of the world's population, but 35% of global suicides, and Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries. And whereas, in Colorado, 78% of firearm deaths are suicides, nearly half of all suicide deaths in Colorado involve the use of a firearm, which is the most common method of suicide death in the state. And whereas, in 2021, in Colorado, 850 persons died from gun violence, with suicides claiming 633 lives and homicide another 182, with the majority of those dying from gun violence being less than 35 years of age. And whereas, in 2021, in Denver, 96 people died by homicide, with 85% of those committed by firearm. Another 228 people were shot but survived their injuries. And whereas, the Denver metropolitan area continues to remember and suffer the devastating impacts of mass shootings, including Columbine High School in 1999 and the Aurora movie theater in 2012. And whereas, research indicates there have been more lives lost from gunfire in America than in all the wars in which U.S. troops have been engaged since our nation's founding. And whereas, protecting public safety in the communities they serve is city council's highest responsibility. And whereas, in January 2013, Hadiah Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should be now celebrating her 21st birthday. And whereas, to honor Hadiah and the 110 Americans whose lives are cut short and the 230-plus survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations designated the first Friday in June as the Fourth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiah's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, choosing this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on the first Friday in June every year to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 3rd through 5th, 2022, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of the victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Council of the City and County of Denver. Section 1, that the Council of the City and County of Denver declares the first Friday of each year, first Friday in June of each year, this year, June 3rd, 2022, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 3rd through 5th to be Wear Orange Weekend, and the entire month of June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and encourages all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Section 2, that the clerk of the City and County of Denver shall attest and affix the seal of the City and County of Denver to this proclamation, and a copy be transmitted to every town for gun safety.
Thank you, Councilmember Cashman. Your motion to adopt?
Yes, thank you. I move that proclamation 22-0628 be adopted.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Cashman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I hate reading this proclamation every year. Those statistics are just mind-numbing. They don't get better. Every year, they get worse. Denver is in the midst of experiencing its own epidemic of gun violence. They're ending up in younger and younger hands. It is, it's just breathtaking, and it's disappointing. And everybody I talk to, it's one of the main things on their mind. You know, I always tell people, you know, when I first took office back in 2015, the phone calls were about development, 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 and now they're about crime, 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 gun violence. It's something we need to wrap our hands around. I don't sit here with the answer, but I'm certainly willing and anxious to be part of the discussion. So with that, Madam President, I just ask my colleagues to join me in supporting this proclamation.
Thank you, Councilmember Cashman. Councilmember Sawyer?
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to thank Councilwoman Cashman for bringing this proclamation forward this year. It is incredibly important. Youth gun violence is an epidemic in our city and in our country at this point. As you know, I've been working to run a gun buyback program. We had our most recent event this past weekend at Platte Park Church. We took in another 55, I believe, weapons, although several of those were BB guns, which totals a little over 360 weapons taken in in less than 10 hours over the course of this year. So it's really, really extraordinary how many weapons are out there, how many people inherit them and don't know what to do with them, don't know how to get rid of them, you know, or people, you know, experience trauma related to gun violence and don't know how to find closure. So this is really, really important. I will just say, this weekend, the mother of a young man, 17-year-old student at South High School who was killed several years ago, Devari Armstrong, spoke at the event, and it was extraordinary and sad. She told us that when Devari was killed, there were three friends of hers, so she and three friends got together. They were all mothers who had lost their sons to gun violence. That was two and a half years ago. There are now 19 mothers who are a part of their support group, and that's extraordinary and sad. And so I just want to thank Councilwoman Cashman for bringing this forward. I want to bring attention to this issue, and I hope we will all wear orange. And just want to also let people know, our next gun buyback event will be held on June 11th in Aurora at Heritage Christian Church, which is right next door to the theater where the Aurora mass shooting occurred. It is National Gun Buyback Day. It is National Gun Buyback Day on June 11th, so we will host the buyback from 10:00 to 1:00, and then we will do an event in partnership with The Broncos afterwards. It will be from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and the public is invited to come and join us, and I hope you all will. It will be a really, really, I think, moving event. So, we're doing what we, you know, one small part of a greater community safety strategy that everyone is working on, recognizing this epidemic, and just really thank Councilmember Cashman for bringing this forward and elevating the conversation. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawyer, and likewise appreciate Councilman Cashman shining a light on this and making sure that we're continuing to remember those who were lost, but making sure that we're doing everything we can to mitigate any future loss of life. Madam Secretary, roll call. C. Tabaka?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech? Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
11 ayes?
11 ayes. Proclamation 22-0628 has been adopted. Councilman Cashman, we'll start that five-minute timer if you'd like to introduce who will accept the proclamation.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We should have Abby Winters from every town on virtual.
All right. We'll go ahead and get Abby moved over. Thanks for raising your hand, Abby. Go ahead, Abby. You can unmute.
Good evening, Councilman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time, Madam President and councilmembers. Thank you for declaring June National Gun Violence Awareness Month and the weekend of June 3rd through the 5th, Wear Orange Weekend. As you heard, Councilman Cashman relayed the statistics and remind us that this gun violence epidemic, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. Wear Orange is a time to renew our commitment, our opportunity to remember and mourn and lift up those impacted by gun violence. We are looking forward to joining with our community members that weekend and throughout the month of June to rededicate ourselves to this work so that mothers, as Councilwoman Sawyer expressed, mothers like Devari's, don't have to share their soul-crushing stories about losing their child, so that we don't have to hear about children accessing unsecured guns and not, and not surviving. So, to be very brief, thank you all for your work on this, for your continued support, and please join us the weekend of June 3rd through the 5th for our several events around the area. We hope to see you there. Thank you again, and thank you, Councilwoman Cashman, for bringing the proclamation.
Thank you very much, Abby, and thank you, Councilman Cashman, for sponsoring this important proclamation as well. Madam Secretary, would you please read the bills for introduction?
From Finance and Governance, 22-519, a bill for an ordinance making an appropriation in the Capital Improvements and Capital Maintenance Fund. 22-527, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed easement agreement between the City and County of Denver and Board of Water Commissioners for relocation of the Denver Water Main Line in connection with roadway improvements. From Land Use, Transportation, and Infrastructure, 22-469, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for 1895 North Quebec Street and 1800 North Oneida Street and South Park Hill. 22-470, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for 1450 North Olive Street and Montclair. 22-476, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification of 2524 through 2660 Laramore Street, 2609, 2623, 2641 Lawrence Street, and 5 points. 22-526, a bill for an ordinance relinquishing the easements in their entirety reserved in ordinance number 19770184, series of 1977, recorded with the Denver Clerk and Recorder at Book 1431, Page 349, and ordinance number 20161134, series of 2016, recorded with the Denver Clerk and Recorder at reception number 2016171591, located at 650 West Colfax Avenue. 22-532, a bill for an ordinance relinquishing the easement reserved in ordinance number 20200541, series of 2020, recorded with the Denver Clerk and Recorder at reception number 2020107805, located at 3850 Blake Street. 22-533, a bill for an ordinance relinquishing the easement in its entirety, established in Section IC of the property deed, recorded with the Denver Clerk and Recorder at reception number 2018124831, located at 8801 East 39th Avenue. And from Safety, Housing, Education, and Homelessness, 22-443, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed intergovernmental agreement between the City and County of Denver and Denver Health and Hospital Authority to support the expansion of the Support Team Assisted Response Program. 22-515, a bill for an ordinance amending an agreement with the Colorado Department of Healthcare Policy and Financing by adding $927,571.46 for a new total of $1,855,142.92 in one year for a new end date of 6/30/2022 for achieving performance-based deliverables related to county administration, medical assistance eligibility, and cooperation with other medical assistance-related entities citywide.
Thank you, Council Secretary. Councilmembers, this is your last opportunity to call out an item. Councilmember Sawyer, will you make the motions for us this evening?
Yes, Council President.
All right, thank you. I'll do a recap. Under Resolutions, Councilmember Heinz has called out Resolutions 520 and 521 for questions, and Councilmember Sawyer has called out Resolutions 504 and 513 for votes under, or 504 through 513 for votes. Under Bills for Introduction, no items have been called out. Under Bills for Final Consideration, no items have been called out. Under Pending, no items have been called out. Madam Secretary, would you please put the first item on our screens? Councilmember Heinz, please go ahead with your questions on Resolution 520 and 521, if you'd like to lump them together, or it's up to you if you'd like to keep them separate.
Having them together would be great, thank you. Thank you, Council President. Honest, there will be a question. I do want to make a brief comment, and I apologize for my voice. I have a computer science degree. I chose to study computer science because I believe in the power of technology and how it can make our lives easier. So, when I heard that Colorado was the first state in the nation to provide regulation around transportation network companies, I think Uber and Lyft, I was happy to hear that we were embracing technology and was hopeful that, excuse me, that these technology platforms would help make people's lives easier. However, I remain concerned that the gig economies embrace technology continue to leave a group behind, specifically people with disabilities. I've been pretty open about my concerns about our micro mobility contracts and that have taken right away from people with disabilities without providing anything for people with disabilities. Scooters are regularly on the sidewalk, either abandoned in the curb ramps or careening down the sidewalk at maximum speed. I have similar concerns to the other gig industries like short-term rental spaces and even industries with physical infrastructure, like how there are no regulations for people with disabilities concerning EV charging stations. So, when I learned that Denver, specifically our airport, was considering entering into contracts with Turo and Avail, I was concerned. These are gig applications that match personal car owners with people who want to rent them for a day or so. So, I reached out to each company and asked them for additional detail about their provisions for people with disabilities. I want to thank Den, by the way, for their speech with which they connected us. I'll have to admit, I am cautiously optimistic about the attention these companies have said they intend to give to this topic, i.e., ensuring everyone has access to their platform, including people with disabilities. After all, if our government is entering into a contract with the company, we should feel comfortable that our taxpayer dollars are going to contracts that serve everyone, not just those easy to serve. Both companies have made it clear that this is not the best opportunity to force accessibility into these platforms. Simply put, there's no way we can fully implement a disability-friendly platform in the short time between now and when this contract will be executed. But I'm hopeful that both companies have described a path forward to add support for everyone, including those with disabilities. So, I want to ask each company a softball question. So, if I could have Avail come, and basically, the only question that I have for you is, do I have your commitment that you and Avail will consider people with disabilities and make it a priority to figure out how to implement it in your platform? And will you mention your name and who you represent for the record?
I'm Nicole Dalmi, and I represent Avail. And yes, Councilmember Heinz, we are committed to making it a priority and definitely have it on our roadmap. We're a young company, so we have a lot to build, but definitely looking forward to working to get that accomplished.
Thank you. That's the only question I have for you. And is there someone from Turo here as well? I'd ask the same softball question. All right, well, thank you, and I have shared my reservations, but I believe that this, we should vote yes on both of these contracts tonight. Thank you, thank you, Council President.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Heinz, and we'll go ahead and move on in the agenda. Councilmember Sawyer, will you please put Resolutions 504 and 5, 504 through, excuse me, 513 on the floor for adoption?
I move that Resolutions 22-504, 505, 506, 507, 508, 509, 510, 511, 512, and 513 be adopted and blocked.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Sawyer?
Thanks, Madam President. These are a series of, I believe, 10 total on-call contracts coming from the Department of Parks and Rec. Thank you to you guys for the work you're doing to institute a reporting structure on the back end. Really, really appreciate it. It's not quite in place yet, so just to be consistent, going to go ahead and vote no on these, and appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawyer. Madam Secretary, roll call on Resolutions 22-0504 through 22-0513.
C. Tabaka?
No.
Torres?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
One aye, 10 ayes.
10 ayes. Resolutions 22-0504 through 22-0513 have passed. That concludes the items to be called out this evening. All bills for introduction are ordered, published. Councilmembers, remember, this is a consent or block vote, and you will need to vote aye. Otherwise, this is your last chance to call out an item for a separate vote. Councilmember Sawyer, will you please put the resolutions for adoption and the bills on final consideration for final passage on the floor?
I move that resolutions be adopted and bills on final consideration be placed upon final consideration and do pass in a block for the following items. Hang on, I've got to pull up my screen here. 22-0579, 0497, 0520, 0521, 0522, 0514, 0516, 0525, 0529, 0531, 0534, 0535, 0537, 0624, 0400, 0498, 0499, 0500, 0501, 0502, 0503, 0517, 0523. We've got a whole list here. 0524, 0467, 0468, 0472, 0473, 0474, 0484, and that'll do it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Sawyer, and it's been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, roll call.
C. Tabaka?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
11 ayes?
11 ayes. The resolutions have been adopted and the bills have been placed upon final consideration and do pass. Our pre-recess announcement, tonight there will be a required public hearing on Council Bill 22-0342, changing the zoning classification for 1286 South Gilpin Street in Washington Park, a required public hearing on Council Bill 22-0354, changing the zoning classification for 2640 North Grape Street in North Park Hill, and a required public hearing on Council Bill 22-0355, changing the zoning classification for 480 South Teehone Street in Athmar Park. Anyone wishing to speak on any of these matters must go online to sign up to speak during the recess of council. Sign up opened online at 4:30 p.m. If you've already signed up to speak, please do not sign up again as we've already received your submission. If you are not already signed up to speak, sign up remains open until the end of recess. If there are no objections from members of council, we'll take a 10-minute recess. Councilmembers, please return to your seats by 6:28 p.m.
Explore breaking space news with space scientists and hear the latest updates on missions exploring the solar system, rocket launches, cutting-edge astronomy, and more. Register online now. This exhibition, organized by the Worcester Art Museum in Massachusetts, examines the historical context of armor and the pragmatic functions it served. Part drag show, part Broadway review, part participatory sing-your-heart-out-good-time. Musical Mondays brings together seasoned performers and theater fans alike for a show tune sing-along extravaganza. Principal conductor Peter Ushin, your Colorado Symphony and Chorus, plus a star-studded cast of vocal soloists, cap a joyous return season with a pair of colossal choral masterpieces sure to delight. sure to delight. A mystery man of many hats, the Polish ambassador, rocks more than just a trademark jumpsuit. He authors sublime, intentional artistic works that are animated safaris in Technicolor Denver Day of Rock is a free music festival that will feature four stages of live music in LODO downtown Denver. The Denver Day of Rock unites the community through music and family-friendly entertainment while also raising funds to help AMP the Cause continue to support nonprofits in our A bright blend of hip-hop, jazz, and bedroom pop, Rex Orange County is an English singer and songwriter. Don't miss this live event at Red Rocks Amphitheater on Wednesday, May 25. And that's a quick look at what's happening in Denver this week. Tree branches and fallen debris are an issue in Denver every spring due to heavy snow, wind, and rain. Low-hanging, broken branches obstructing sidewalk use can be reported by calling 311 or using PocketGov to submit a report or chat with a live person. A forestry inspector will then respond to educate the property owner with resources they could employ to get their trees up to code. Residents are also responsible for the cleanup of fallen tree debris on their private property and fallen debris within the public right-of-way adjacent to their property. If you're not sure how to handle a tree-related concern, give 311 a call, and they can connect you with a forestry specialist. Denver 311 and PocketGov, helping you navigate Denver City Services.
This is a very deadly substance. It's arguably the most deadly illegal drug that we've had to deal with. This is an approach that drug dealers are utilizing. High potency that is very addictive, brings repeat customers to enhance their profits. And unfortunately, more and more drugs are being laced with fentanyl, and really, it is such a deadly substance that one too many micrograms can cause death.
Have you ever woken up on trash day and were unsure if you should put out your recycling bin or not? Luckily, you don't have to waste any time finding what you need. Just let Denver Gov's optimized search do the work for you. Just throw what you're looking for into the search bar and find almost anything on our site. Even if you're not sure what you're looking for, the search bar can help you by giving you the most likely results. Optimize Search, just one of many great features on the all-new DenverGov.org.
It's time to BYOB. Bring your own bag, that is, to the grocery store, the hardware store, and all retail stores in Denver. Starting July 1st, bring your own bag when you shop. All retail stores will charge 10 cents for each plastic or paper bag provided at checkout.
Hey, Denver residents. In 2022, DOD's Solid Waste Management Division is making changes to household trash collection. For many of you, this means your collection day for trash, recycling, and compost will change. You can confirm your large item in an extra trash collection week, as well as your trash collection day, online at denvergov.org/reroute and in the Recollect app. Thanks for your support, Denver.
Street sweeping season is starting in Denver. It runs April through November. So what we encourage people to do is go out and look at the red and white street sweeping signs on their block, and then move their car on their street sweeping day. We ask people to move their cars so that we can sweep effectively. We want to get all the way to the curb line where dirt and debris tends to accumulate. Street sweeping helps us keep our environment clean, our neighborhoods clean. It removes dirt and debris off the streets, keeps it out of our ear and water. Taking that debris off the street also prevents our stormwater inlets from getting clogged when it rains. So we want to clean that curb line the best we can. So we're out here reminding people to please move your cars for your street sweeping day. You can look at the red and white signs that are on your block to learn what day is your street sweeping day. You can also go to PocketGov.com, where you can see your street sweeping schedule and sign up for reminders via email or text. So we encourage people to do that to avoid a street sweeping citation.
Just press the button to activate the flashing yellow warning lights so drivers are alerted to slow down and stop, giving pedestrians a safe way to cross. Visit denvergov.org/visionzero. In Denver, the road most traveled is full of potholes. Fear not, worried traveler. Denver's Department of Transportation and Infrastructure is ready to fix the problem. To report a pothole, call 311 or go online at PocketGov.org. Click on the button, "Report a Problem," fill out the quick questionnaire, and within 72 hours, crews will be sent to fix the problem. Call 311 or go online at PocketGov.org.
Elevating Denver is back with an all-new episode May 10. We're taking a look at the 16th Street Mall redesign, how to stay informed in case of an emergency, and how Denver is helping to get guns off the street.
But we do have control over the choices that our kids make.
And we'll meet DPD's newest officer.
Using a dog is a perfect tool for us to be able to reach those populations that normally wouldn't interact with us.
We have three public hearings tonight. For those who are participating in person, when called upon, please come to the podium. And on the presentation monitor on the wall, you will see your time counting down. For those participating virtually, when called upon, please wait until our meeting host promotes you to speaker. When you are promoted, your screen will ask permission to allow us to promote you. Please accept the promotion. Once you accept promotion, your screen will flash and say, "Reconnecting to meeting." Please don't leave the meeting. You will be reconnected, and will need to turn on your camera if you have one, and your microphone. You will see your time counting down at the bottom of your screen. Once you finish speaking, you will change back to participant mode and see your screen flash one more time. All speakers should begin their remarks by telling the council their names and cities of residence, and if they feel comfortable doing so, their home address. If you've signed up to answer questions only, state your name and note that you are available for questions of council. Speakers will have three minutes. There is no yielding of time. If translation is needed, you will be given an additional three minutes for your comments to be interpreted. Speakers must stay on the topic of the hearing and must direct their comments to the council members. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech. Direct your comments to council as a whole, and please refrain from individual or personal attacks. Councilmember Sawyer, will you please put Council Bill 22-0342 on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill 22-0342 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 22-0342 is open. May we have the staff report?
Good afternoon, members of city council. My name is Fran Peñafiel, senior city planner with Community Planning and Development. And tonight, we have three fun ADUs for you. So I'm going to be presenting first, an overview of the map amendment of 1286 South Gilpin Street. It is located in Council District 6, in the Washington Park neighborhood. So the request is to rezone to a district that will allow for an ADU at the rear of the property. All other form and U standards will remain the same. The property is currently in the urban single-unit C-zone district, which is located, which in this location would allow for the urban house building form in a minimum sole lot size of 5,500 square feet. And as you can see on the map, the property is mostly surrounded by other properties, also zoned USUC, with some open space, public parks zoning to the west, and some, it has a school to the south. The existing land use of the site is single-unit residential, and while there is other single-unit uses to the north and east, Washington Park is directly to the west, and the Denver South High School campus is located across Luciana Avenue to the south of the property. This light here shows that the subject property is located in a residential area and gives you an idea of the residential neighborhood where it's located. Now, speaking to the process, informational notice of the application was sent on January 4th, 2022. Planning Board recommended approval unanimously in March 16th meeting. Today, staff has received one letter of support and two letters of opposition from the same community member. The first letter expresses support to ADUs, given that they can allow for an increase in gentile density and help with the housing crisis by adding more homes in neighborhoods like Washington Park. The two letters of opposition speak of traffic impacts and concerns with parking in the Now, moving on to the Denver zoning code review criteria, it must be found the requested map amendment is consistent with the five criteria. The first criterion is consistency with adopted plans. There are two plans applicable to this rezoning. We have Comprehensive Plan 2040 and Blueprint Denver. As stated in the staff report, the rezoning is consistent with several goals in the Comprehensive Plan 2040. This map amendment will promote equity by creating a greater mix of housing options in every neighborhood, and it will lead to an environmentally resilient Denver by promoting infill development where infrastructure and services are already in place. Now, looking at Blueprint Denver, the subject property is mapped as part of the urban neighborhood And the Future Places map designates it as low residential place type. These place types have predominantly single and two-unit uses, and accessory dwelling units are appropriate. While Luciana Avenue is designated as a residential collector future street type, Gilpin Street is designated as a local street, which is mostly characterized by residential uses. The growth area in Blueprint Denver is all other areas of the city. These areas are anticipated to see 10% employment growth and 20% housing growth by 2040. Blueprint also includes specific policy recommendations. Housing Policy Number 4 focuses on diversifying housing choice through the expansion of accessory dwelling units throughout all residential areas. Staff also finds the requested zoning meets the next two criteria. The rezoning will result in uniformity of district regulations and will further the public health, safety, and welfare, primarily through the implementation of adopted plans. The justified circumstance for this rezoning is a city adopted plan. Since the approval of the existing USUC Zone District, the city has approved, has adopted the Comprehensive Plan and Blueprint Denver. As stated throughout this presentation, the proposed rezoning meets the intent of both plans. Overall, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the urban neighborhood context, residential district, and the USUC One Zone District. With that, staff recommends approval based on finding all review criteria has been met.
Thank you, Fran, for the staff report. We have one individual signed up to speak this evening, Jesse Paris. Jesse, we're going to need you to accept the promotion, please. Oh, I see you're there. Go ahead, please.
May I be heard?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Jessica Stone-Pearsson. I'm representing for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Commencement for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the East Denver Residence Council, Frontline Black News, and I'll be the next member of Denver in 2023. I reside in District 8, Councilman Hearn's District. I'm in favor of zoning tonight. I supported ADUs when I ran for city council at large in 2019. I'll continue to support them as mayor in 2023. And it meets all five of the criteria, so there's nothing I can say is going to change your mind on this. Good job, Cashman. You can nay and can't stay, but the rest of y'all have to go. This is election season. All those that's watching, you need to sweep the council like you sweep the homeless every night. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Questions from members of council on Council Bill 22-0342? The public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill 22-0342? Councilman Cashman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I do believe this application clearly meets the zoning criteria. I have had discussions with a number of Wash Park East residents that are very anxious for the ADU committee to complete its work so that we can begin looking at a more focused method of bringing ADUs into our individual neighborhoods as nuanced as possible. But under our current guidance, I do believe this meets the criteria. It's an interesting site. If you remember the picture of the home, it's right on Louisiana Avenue across from South High. The yard is elevated, but the garage itself sits down at street level and enters and exits immediately off of Louisiana. And while we don't deal with particular site plans at this point, I would be a liar if I didn't say it would be a heck of a place for a teacher at South High to be able to find a place to live at some point and walk across the street to work in the morning. So with that, I would just ask my colleagues to join me in supporting this application.
Thank you, Councilmember Cashman, and I concur. It does meet all of the rezoning criteria, and I'm happy to support it this evening. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill 22-0342. Seeta Baka? Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Ten ayes? Ten ayes. Council Bill twenty-two dash zero three four two has passed. We're going to move on to our next, uh, hearing. Thank you, Fran. Councilmember Sawyer, will you please put Council Bill twenty-two dash zero three five four on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill twenty-two dash zero three five four be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill twenty-two dash zero three five four is open. May we have the staff report?
Thank you, Madam, uh, President. Uh, good evening, members of council. Valerie Arretta, Senior City Planner with CPD. I will be presenting an ADU rezoning case for the subject property located at twenty-six forty North Grape Street. The subject property is in Council District Eight with Councilmember Herndon, located in the North Park Hill neighborhood. Subject property is currently six thousand one hundred and ninety square feet with a zone lot width of fifty feet. The request is for urban edge, single unit D-one-X, to allow for a detached accessory dwelling unit in the rear of the lot. The site and the surrounding properties to the north, southeast, and west are all ESUDX, which allows for suburban and urban houses' primary building forms with a minimum zone lot of six thousand square feet. Just southeast of the site is the McAuliffe International School, and East Twenty-Sixth Avenue to the south is classified as a residential collector street type. The site is single-unit residential and surrounded by other single-unit residentials. To the southeast is public quasi-public. To the northwest is a small grouping of office, mixed-use, commercial, retail, park, open space callouts. Subject property is mid-block with alley access and is located between Twenty-Eighth and Twenty-Sixth Avenue. There is an existing primary single-unit structure and a detached garage accessory structure currently on the lot. The photo at the top is a capture of the alley adjacent to the site showing the existing garage structure, and the photo to the bottom is property, uh, to the west across the street. This map amendment went to Planning Board on Wednesday, March sixteenth, where the item was recommended approval on the consent agenda. The rezoning was then forwarded to final hearing of City Council by the Land Use Transportation and Infrastructure Committee on Consent on March twenty-ninth and is being heard today. To date, staff has not received, um, written input from any RNOs that were sent notice and no public comment. As we know, the Denver zoning code has five review criteria. The first is consistency with adopted plans, starting with Comprehensive Plan twenty forty. Staff found the rezoning to be consistent with several strategies shown in Comp Plan twenty forty. Uh, equitable, affordable, inclusive Goal Strategy A, increasing development of housing units close to transit and mixed-use developments. Um, Goal Two Strategy A, create a greater mix of housing options in every neighborhood for all individuals and families. Environmental resiliency Goal Eight Strategy A, promote infill development where infrastructure and services are already in place. And Goal Eight Strategy B, encourage mixed-use communities where residents can live, work, and play in their own neighborhoods. Regarding Blueprint Denver, uh, this area is mapped as urban edge context and residential low, which consists of predominantly single and two-unit uses on smaller lots and allows for accessory dwelling units to be thoughtfully and appropriately integrated where compatible. Additionally, Blueprint Denver guidance provides support through Policy Four, diversity housing choice through the expansion of accessory dwelling units throughout all residential areas. Strategy E, a citywide approach to enable ADUs is preferred. Until a holistic approach is in place, individual rezonings to enable ADUs in all residential areas, especially where proximate to transit, are appropriate. Unless there's a neighborhood plan supporting ADUs, rezoning should be small in area in order to minimize impact to surrounding residential areas. This area also includes the Park Hill Neighborhood Plan of two thousand, which provides support through the land use and zoning goal of maintaining the existing integrity of the residential character of Park Hill. Assure continued growth and development in Park Hill results in a balanced and compatible mix of housing types and densities. That can be found on page thirty-two. Land Use and Zoning Action Recommendation Three, create and maintain a mix of housing types and sizes that are attractive and affordable to a diversity of ages, incomes, household types, sizes, cultural, and ethnic backgrounds. That can be found on page thirty-three. Regarding Criteria Two and Three, staff found the rezoning to be consistent with adopted plans. The proposed rezoning will result in uniform application of Zone District Building Form, Use, and Design Regulations, and it will further, further public health, safety, and welfare through implementing adopted plans and facilitating increased housing density. Staff found the proposed criteria, criteria is, uh, sorry, staff found that the proposed rezoning is justified through a city adopted Plan B. And finally, the context, Zone District Purpose and Intent of ESUDone-X are all appropriate for this particular location, given the surrounding area, the adopted plan guidance, and the location of the site. Given the finding that all review criteria have been met, CPD recommends City Council approve Application twenty-two-one-I-zero-zero-one-seven-four based on finding all review criteria have been met. Just to note that approval of a rezoning is not approval of a proposed specific development project. Thank you, and I'm happy to take questions.
All right. Thank you, Val, for the staff report. And this evening, we have one individual signed up to speak on this hearing, Jesse Go ahead, please, Jesse.
All right, let me, uh, turn my camera on. Okay, members of council, my name is Shawn Paris, and I'm representing for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Commitment for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the East Denver Residence Council, Frontline Black News, and I'll be the next Mayor of Denver in twenty-twenty-three. I reside in District Eight in Christopher Herndon District. Um, I'm in favor of rezoning tonight. I supported eighty-U's when I ran for City Council at large in twenty-nineteen. I continue to support them as mayor, uh, so-to-be mayor, uh, for in twenty-twenty-three. And, um, it meets all five of the criteria, so there's nothing I can say that's going to change mine on this rezoning. Um, so, um, Herndon, you got this one. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Questions from members of council on Council Bill twenty-two dash zero three five four? Not seeing any. The public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill twenty-two dash zero three five four? I'll go ahead and chime in. I appreciate the staff report, Val, and this rezoning meets all of the criteria, and so happy to support it this evening, and would ask my council colleagues to support it as well. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill twenty-two dash zero three five four. Cita Baca?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman? Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, please close the voting and announce the results. Ten ayes? Ten ayes. Council Bill twenty-two dash zero three five four has passed. Councilmember Sawyer, will you please put Council Bill twenty-two dash zero three five five on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill twenty-two dash zero three five five be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill twenty-two dash zero three five five is open, and we have Val back up for the staff report. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, members of council. Again, Valerie Arretta, Senior City Planner with Community Planning and Development. I will be presenting an ADU rezoning case for the subject property located at four eighty South Tacon Street. The subject site is in Council District Seven with Councilmember Clark, located in the Athmar Park neighborhood. Subject property is a large, fairly large site, currently nine thousand three hundred and seventy square feet with a zone lot width of fifty feet. The request is for urban edge, single unit B-one, to allow for a detached accessory dwelling unit in the rear of the lot. The site and the surrounding properties to the north and east are ESUB, allowing only urban houses with a minimum zone lot area of forty-five hundred square feet. Just south of the site is zoned ESUDX, allowing for both suburban and urban houses with a minimum zone lot area of six thousand square feet. To the west is zone former Chapter Fifty-nine R-one, which is a single-unit detached dwelling low-density district. To the northeast is ETUC, which allows up to two units on a minimum zone lot area of fifty-five hundred square feet. And to the north off Alameda Avenue is urban edge mixed-use three A with use overlays one and two. The site is single-unit residential and surrounded by single-unit residential to the north, east, and south of the site. West of the site is classified public quasi-public, where you can find the Mathematics and Science Leadership Academy, Rochelle Junior High School, Catholic Charities Rochelle, and Kip Denver Collegiate High School, all along South Tacon Street. Subject property is fairly large corner lot on the northeast corner of Virginia Avenue and South Tacon Street. There is an existing primary single-unit structure shown in the middle photo and a detached accessory structure currently located on the lot. The photo at the top is a capture of the school campus across the street to the west of the property, and the photo on the bottom is a property across the street directly to the south. The map amendment went to Planning Board on Wednesday, March sixteenth, where the team was, uh, where the item was recommended approval on the consent agenda. The rezoning was then moved forward to the final hearing of City Council by the Land Use Transportation Infrastructure Committee on Consent on March twenty-ninth and is being heard today. To date, staff has not received written input from any of the registered neighborhood organizations that were sent notice and no public comments received. The Denver zoning code has five criteria, review criteria. The first is consistency with adopted plans, starting with Comprehensive Plan twenty forty. Staff found the rezoning to be consistent with several strategies shown from Comp Plan twenty forty. Again, Goal One, Strategy A, increasing development of housing units close to transit and mixed-use developments. Goal Two, Strategy A, create a mix, greater mix of housing options in every neighborhood for all individuals and families. Uh, Goal Eight Strategy A, under environment, is promote infill development where infrastructure and services are already in place. And environmental resilient Goal Eight Strategy B, encourage a mixed-use communities where residents can live, work, and play in their own neighborhoods. Blueprint Denver maps this area as urban edge context and residential low, which consists of predominantly single and two-unit uses on smaller lots and allows for accessory dwelling units to be thoughtfully and appropriately integrated where compatible. Additionally, Blueprint Denver guidance provides support through Policy Four, diversify housing choice through the expansion of accessory dwelling units throughout all residential areas, as well as Strategy E, a citywide approach to enable ADUs is preferred. The Athmar Park Perimeter Plan of two thousand, uh, finds that the proposed rezoning demonstrates consistency with this plan per the following, uh, goal found on page fourteen of overall plan goals and strategies section. Goal One, promote neighborhood stability, support preservation of neighborhood character, and create sense of place. Strategies underneath that goal continue to maintain the integrity of residentially-zoned areas and identify characteristics that make Athmar Park a unique neighborhood and promote the neighborhood as a good place to live and work. For Criteria Two and Three, staff found the rezoning to be consistent with adopted plans. The proposed rezoning will result in uniform application of Zone District Building Form, Use, and Design Regulations, and it will further the public health, safety, and welfare through implementing adopted plans and facilitating increased housing density. For Criteria Four, staff found that the proposed rezoning is justified through a city adopted Plan B. And finally, the context, Zone District Purpose and Intent of ESUB-one are all appropriate for this particular location, given the surrounding area, the adopted plan guidance, and the location of the site. Given the finding that all review criteria have been met, CPD recommends City Council approve Application twenty-two-one-I-dash-zero-zero-two-four-zero based on finding all review criteria have been met. Note is, approval of a rezoning is not approval of a proposed specific development project. Thank you.
Thank you, Val, for the staff report. We have one individual signed up to speak on this hearing, Jesse Paris.
Yes. Good evening, members of council. I find it odd that you will not let me turn on my camera, but we're going to go through with it. Um, my name is Jessica Shawn Paris, and my, I'm representing for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Commitment for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the East Denver Residence Council, Frontline Black News, and I will be the next Mayor of Denver in twenty-twenty-three, and I reside in District Eight in Christopher Herndon's District. I'm in favor of this rezoning tonight. I've supported eighty-U's in the past. When I ran for City Council at large in nineteen, I supported them. And still, in twenty-two, uh, soon to be twenty-twenty-three, I will continue to support them. And, uh, rezoning is no different. It meets all five of the criteria, which is consistency with adopted plans. It meets uniformity with district regulations. It furthers public health, safety, and wellness. It meets justifying circumstances. It meets consistency with neighborhood context, zone, district, purpose, and intent. So with that being said, I support this, and I hope you will as well. Um, thank you. Sweep the council like they sweep the unhoused every night. Candy and Cashman can stay.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Questions from members of council on Council Bill twenty-two dash zero three five five? Councilmember Flynn?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. The orientation of this lot, the address of this lot, is at odds with the rest of the Valverde subdivision, uh, that, in which it's part. It covers three lots of, of that subdivision, and the rest of the residences front on the east-west streets, the avenues. But this one has an address on Tacon Street. So I'm curious, how does CPD apply the standards for, uh, placing an ADU on a lot like that? Because if we recognize Tacon Street as the front, then the lot is only seventy-five feet deep. And does that meet the requirements for a detached ADU in the rear thirty-five percent of that lot? Does that give sufficient space? Or do we have the ability to, uh, modify some of those for special circumstances like this? The reason I ask is there is an alley, but it's on the side of the house rather than at the rear of the house.
Sure.
If you go by the address. Uh, the other houses on that block, I think, are oriented the same way, but they have addresses on the avenue. I think it's Alaska Place. So how do, how do we handle that?
Uh, you know, I'll try to give that a stab, Councilman Flynn. Um, of course, the rezoning side of things, um, it, sometimes we don't always see a proposal of what, what it, what wants to be done with the site, but if and when we do receive a proposal concurrent with the rezoning, we typically connect with our development services team, um, and help the applicant to understand what would be feasible, what would not. Bless you. It would also be dependent on whether or not they want to demolish the primary structure. That could also be an option, um, if they wanted to split the lot because they are going down to a, a smaller lot size. Um, so there are a number of different options, but I think that we wouldn't be able to kind of narrow that down, and I don't know that, what CPD would recommend on the development services side of things if and when a project came in for concept.
Sure. Uh, I think the rest of the parcels, the rest of the lots on that block, on Alaska, uh, cover only two lots of the subdivision. This one is three, so it's seventy-five feet. Uh, also, there is a, an existing garage on the property, and, uh, I wasn't able to drive by, but I, just looking at, um, the Google satellite view, which is not really a satellite. It looks like that might be, uh, it has door, several doors on it and a porch. Is that already being used as an ADU, do you know, or is that strictly a garage?
You know, I would not be able to answer that, but maybe if the applicant is on right now, um, Paul Salazar is his name, could respond to that.
Sure. Thank you. Madam President, if, if Mr. Salazar is there, could he?
We do. Yeah, I see him raising his hands, and so will, his hand, so we'll ask the producers to bring him into the panelists, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
All right. We have Mr. Salazar on.
Mr. Salazar, I was wondering if, does the garage that's on the property right now, is that being used? Is that equipped as a residence? Is there a kitchen and bathroom and plumbing in there?
No, currently, that garage is just a garage.
Thank you. Thank you. It's, it's hard to tell from, uh, Mr. Google. Appreciate that. Would you be able to follow up with us? Would you be able to follow up with us as to what are the standards for locating an ADU on a property when it's shallow like that and the backyard is just so narrow? Whereas it would make more sense to put this ADU where the garage is, off the alley. I mean, that would be a perfect location for it, but would that fit within our standards and forms? Just a follow-up would be helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Absolutely, Councilman Flynn. Thank you so much. I'm sure our ADU program's already covering it. I'm sorry, I don't have a better response.
Okay, thank you.
That will follow up.
Are they watching?
Possibly.
I would assume so, perhaps. So, all right. Well, thank you, Val, for the response, and Councilmember Flynn for those questions. The public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill 22-0355? Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for the great presentation. I think this clearly meets the criteria that we're here to determine tonight, so I'll be very supportive of this. I also just wanted to flag for the rest of the council that Athmar and Valverde are now working with CPD in my office to do what the rest of West Denver has done and look at doing neighborhood-wide ADUs. And that is getting so popular that I'm now getting bugged by Ruby Hill because they're a little upset that they were not included in the second round. So hopefully, lots of good ADUs on the way and hopefully fewer nights like tonight where we are sitting here and just approving one little ADU at a time as we go. And so thank you to our President Pro Tem for leading the way over in West Denver on my side of the thing with some neighborhoods that really got Valverde and Athmar excited about it, and who knows, maybe Ruby Hill by the time we're done with it in this round. So thank you very much. Definitely be supporting this tonight. Thank you, Council President.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Clark, and happy to support this this evening as well. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill 22-0355, please.
C. Tabaka?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Ten ayes?
Ten ayes. Council Bill 22-0355 has passed. Thank you for the staff report, Val. And the pre-adjournment announcement, this evening, on Monday, June 20th, council will hold a required public hearing on Council Bill 22-0469, changing the zoning classification for 1895 North Quebec Street and 1800 North Oneida Street in South Park Hill. A required public hearing on Council Bill 22-0470, changing the zoning classification for 1450 North Olive Street in Montclair, and a required public hearing on Council Bill 22-0476, changing the zoning classification of 2524 through 2660, Laramore Street, 2609, 2623, 2641 Lawrence Street, and Five Points. Any protests against Council Bills 22-469, 22-470, or 22-476 must be filed with the council offices no later than noon on Monday, June 13th. There being no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.